...to you about kind of where we're moving towards in that discussion. And then turn it over to the Planning Commission for conversation about some of the work that the Subcommittee has done and talk about the draft letter that Commissioner Lettich sent out. So, we'll take it from there. Then we do have, after that discussion, we hope there is still time to dive into the redesignation topic that we talked about in the AIS. And we have some maps and would like to get your general thoughts on that information as well. So, we'll see how our time goes here. So, I'll turn it over to Heather. Hit the lights.
Who looks to the sky?
[laughing]. Hoping for no technical difficulties. Okay, great. Well, good evening. I'm Heather O'Donnell and I'm in the Planning Division. And as Carol mentioned, first part of our discussion this evening is going to be about housing mix, so we'll do a refresher on that. And then after that, we're going to talk about redesignation opportunities in the city. So, as far as housing mix goes, I'm going to go through a brief overview of where we're at in the process, some of the factors that we've already talked about regarding how you would decide on a housing mix, and then which direction we feel that the evidence is kind of leading us towards, and then what the next steps would be. So, where we're at in the process, and you've seen this before, we are in the Strategy Refinement stage of Envision Eugene. We're finalizing all of our land needs and all of the strategies that we're going to need to be able to implement, how we're going to accommodate all of our land needs. So, right now, housing mix is most associated with where our residential land need is. And you're familiar with this, the seven pillars of Envision Eugene. These pillars and the strategies associated with them are really vision and value statements of the community that we've got feedback on, and they really provide the foundation for the work that we're continuing on. So, we'll talk a little bit more about how those are related to housing mix in a minute. So, what is housing mix? And this is a refresher for you. When we talk about housing mix, we've simplified the discussion, and what we've said is what we're really talking about is basically building types and how many units are in certain building types. So, for housing mix, we're talking about what percentage of housing is single-family homes, and those are detached homes. So, they're homes that have basically one housing unit in them, and that can be your traditional, single-family detached home, like the picture on the top left. That can be a manufactured home. That could be a secondary or accessory dwelling unit that's detached from the primary home. So, that's essentially what we put in the single-family home category. And what we've put in the multifamily home category is a variety of housing types that are attached. Basically, it's housing types that have more than one unit in them, and the units are attached. So, that could be anything from, for instance, row houses or townhouses, like in the upper right-hand corner, to duplexes and fourplexes, to something even more dense, like condominiums and larger apartment complexes. So, housing mix has a key impact on what our single-family housing need is going to be for the next 20 years. So, once we determine how many single-family detached homes we think we're going to need, so what part of that mix that we'll need for the next 20 years, then we can look at, okay, well, how much capacity do we have in the urban growth boundary for those single-family homes? And that's made up of a couple of different elements we've got there. You know, how many of those single-family homes can fit on our vacant land? How many on our partially vacant land? How many through efficiency strategies? So, those are things that we can do to change current policies to allow more housing to fit in parts of the city that we don't currently see. And then land redesignation, which we're going to talk about later. Are there areas of the city that are currently planned for one type of use and might be more appropriate and help us with our need if we plan them as single-family? And then anything that we determine we can't fit inside the existing urban growth boundary, then that would be our remaining need, and it'd be the number of single-family homes that we'd need to expand the UGB for. So, the housing mix, the mix of our future housing, has an impact on basically our single-family housing package and our multifamily housing package. So, the question is, how do we decide on what is an appropriate mix to plan for our future housing for the next 20 years to be? There's a lot of information. You've heard a lot of it already. There's been a lot of work around this topic. Things that we can look at are, we can evaluate housing mixes against the Envision Eugene pillars. We can evaluate them against the triple bottom line tool. We can look at reports and statistics, like the U.S. Census, our development trends locally, and national reports, what's going on nationally with different, with, you know, the baby boomers or gas prices, those kinds of things. And we can also look to the state. We can look at what statewide trends are, what's going on in other jurisdictions, what Oregon State planning law says, and getting feedback from the state. So, we're going to run through all of these things and discuss kind of the evidence in each of these categories, and talk about how we believe this evidence is moving us, what mix it's moving us towards. And when we think about this, I think what we've found is there's no formula that will actually tell us what specific mix is right for us, and we know that the future is uncertain. We're trying to kind of predict what kind of housing people are going to want in the future, so we have to remain flexible. So, as you know, there's been a lot of work on housing mix already. Our current housing mix, or our mix of the existing stock in the city, is 61% single-family detached, 39% multifamily. We've worked with our consultants, Echo Northwest. They came up with a preliminary recommendation of moving towards more multifamily, so that would be towards the blue side of the screen, to 55-45. We worked with the Housing Mix Subcommittee. They came up with a range of our future housing mix for new housing would be somewhere between 60-40 and 55-45. And then most recently, we worked with the Technical Resource Group, who put the range at 60-40, all the way to 40-60 on the blue side there. So, when looking at the Envision Eugene pillars, I'm not going to go through these, but what we found was that when you consider them and the intent and the strategies around those, they really moved us towards planning for more multifamily in the future. We felt that the evidence was there for that, and the check marks there are the ones that we felt were the most compelling, particularly around housing affordability and compact development and transportation goals. And similarly, when you look at the triple bottom line, for much of the similar evidence that we found when we looked at the Envision Eugene pillars, we also found that there was more guidance towards providing more multifamily than we've seen in the past. So, we've also looked at household demographics and trends, and there's a lot more here that we've looked at, and those of you that participated in the smaller groups have seen a lot of that information. But what we know is that household size, age, and household size, households, age, and household income are the three factors that have the largest impact or most influence on your housing choice. What we've seen is that our households are smaller, partially because they're getting older. We've also seen a decrease in households with children, and we've seen an increase in households that are single-person households. We also know that Eugene has more college-age people, but Lane County in general also has baby boomers as being the fastest-growing segment of the population. There's a lot of national reports that have conflicting information or varying opinions about what, you know, college-age or generation Y and baby boomers, how they're going to, what their housing choices are going to be in the future. But we can say locally, when we look at the local information, that generally, younger people with less income mostly rent, and that older people from 45 to 74 with more income mostly own, and they mostly own single-family. But we also see that income and homeownership begins to decrease at 65 and 75 respectively. So, you can draw some parallel lines there. We also have to look at what our housing stock has been providing for, for all income levels for the city of Eugene, so housing affordability. And when we're talking about housing affordability, we're not just talking about low-income housing. We're talking about housing affordability for all income levels. What we found in the analysis was that nearly 50% of Eugene households are cost burden, meaning they're paying more than the recommended 30% on housing and utilities, and that it's even higher for renters. We know there's some concerns with using cost burden as a measuring tool, but this is something that is kind of nationally accepted standard to use.
Heather, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Do you know what the national average of households that are cost burdened is?
I could not tell you that off the top of my head. I can easily get that, though.
Okay. It'd be curious to see.
Sure. What our comparison is.
Thank you.
Yep. I know I've seen it, but I can't tell you right now.
No hurry. Thank you.
We also know that in Eugene, home costs have doubled in the past 10 years compared to that of income. In 2008, we had a deficit of homes for households, a significant deficit of homes for households earning $25,000 or less, so lower-income households. And when you look at the census, lower incomes generally live in multifamily housing. But getting back also to housing affordability for all income levels, we also know that we have a deficit for households earning even the median family income of $55,500. And so, you know, as I mentioned earlier, we can also look to what the state guidance might be. If you look at the statewide planning goals, the state greenhouse gas regulations, and transportation that's going on right now, it's really around compact urban development and reducing vehicle trips, which, you know, attached housing and multifamily housing tends to be more efficient as far as that goes. And then statewide trends, we can look at what other jurisdictions are doing. Now, this isn't directly comparable, because every jurisdiction has to go through their own needs analysis to understand what their deficits are. And so, we just talked about what Eugene's are, but it does give you a sense of what's going on in the state. And for the most comparable cities, what you're seeing is that there is a trend towards planning for more multifamily, or going to the right side or the blue side of the screen than what they currently have. So, that's what those arrows are showing you, is basically around their starting point, what their current housing mix is, and what direction they're planning for their new housing to be.
So, the percent say in Medford says that they're at 70-30, so they're trying to go to 63-37?
Right.
Is that how we read that?
Right. And that would mean a 7% shift. That's what the percentage indicates.
But that's a 7% shift in new housing units.
Correct. Right. And we'll get into that a little bit more with what that means for Eugene as well. Oops. There we go. So, we've already talked about what the evidence is showing to us, which is that you need to look at planning for more multifamily than we've seen in the past. But the question is, now, you know, what does that mean for a mix? How far, how much more multifamily would we assume in the future? So, we've already talked about some of the factors that impact housing mix. There are some additional ones that you can think about when thinking about how far of a mix, how much, how aggressive basically with the mix you would go. One of them is market, our market and our economics. Even if national trends that we're hearing happen, or, you know, there's a lot of trends that are being talked about, even if there's a significant change, how would that actually impact Eugene? Eugene's very different from other urban markets. A particular one is Portland, but, you know, there's other urban markets in the nation that get studied a lot, and we don't really know what the impact is going to be on Eugene. We also know that Eugene has lower property values. We ask lower rents, but we have comparable construction costs. And then, and again, we also have conservative lenders. So, we have a mix of elements here about our market that are different from other markets. We also know that we have limited control about what is actually going to be built. What we're talking about here with the mix is really creating an opportunity to address the housing deficits that we have. We can't require people to build certain housing types, but we're creating those opportunities. And then finally, we need to demonstrate that whatever mix that we're shooting for is a reasonable mix to both the state and to the community. And so, based on the evidence that we've been looking at, it seems like the evidence is pointing us towards more multifamily and is gearing us towards something like a 55-45 mix. And so, what this graph shows you is the one that you saw before, is that we would be, you know, if that mix were in there, we would be in alignment with what some of the other jurisdictions are looking at. And then again, this one shows similarly that, you know, something like a 55-45 mix would be on par with Echo Northwest recommendation, and also within the ranges of the other Subcommittee work that has been going on. And as well, we've also heard from DLCD that based on Eugene's, you know, information that we've talked about, that they have found that they can support, basically the evidence supports something around a 55-45 mix. And so, to get to Commissioner Duncan's question as well, you know, what would a mix like this look like as far as a shift for our housing stock? Well, for new housing, it would be about a 6% shift of our new housing going to multifamily housing over the next 20 years. The effect on the overall housing mix is about 1%. And that's because we have so much housing stock that the 15,000 dwelling units that we're talking about over the next 20 years is small in compared to our total housing stock. So, as we talked about earlier, housing mix is one element of the housing package. For single-family housing, completing the single-family housing package, there's a couple steps that we need to complete along with housing mix, and that is finishing our single-family partially vacant land capacity and identifying any areas that we want to re-designate to single-family. And once we finish those up, we'll know whether or not we have a need for a single-family expansion or not, and if we do, how much that would be. Our next steps overall in housing are that we're going to City Council for a work session on September 28th. We'll be talking about housing mix with them there. And then, on the multifamily housing side, we also need to finish our multifamily partially vacant land capacity and finish the discussion about what redevelopment strategies we're going to be implementing in order to fit all of our multifamily housing inside the existing urban growth boundary. That's a policy, or, I'm sorry, not a policy, but a goal that is in the Envision Eugene document, that all of our multifamily housing would be in there. So, that's why we're not talking about a UGB expansion for any remainder there. So, that concludes my presentation. So, I'll hit the lights and like to turn it over to the Planning Commissioners for discussion, but maybe to kick it off, Commissioner Lettich, who is kind of chairing the Housing Subcommittee. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
No, I've got questions about this.
Sure.
Commissioner Lettich.
Heather, early on on the chart where you addressed the community vision, the seven pillars against the more single-family and the more multifamily, something that we've talked about, I think considerably here at this group, is the housing affordability. Can you help us understand how you come to the conclusion that more multifamily is more in line, excuse me, with housing affordability than the single-family?
Sure. So, if you actually, if you look at the Envision Eugene pillar document, I believe it actually has a strategy that talks about planning for more multifamily housing to help with our housing affordability issues. We talked earlier about how, when you look at the census data, you actually see that folks that are in lower incomes are actually mostly living in multifamily housing, so there is a correlation there that we see. And that is where our biggest deficit is, is for lower income levels. And so, it's definitely, I think, important to note that there's a number of other strategies associated with the housing affordability pillar, not just housing mix, that are trying to get at housing affordability, and that we will need to look at additional programs along with housing mix to try to get at this issue.
How does that reconcile with what I think Commissioner Duncan has brought up on occasion, that the cost of new construction, really in even our experience with opportunity citing when we did the example, higher-density unit out there at the Marine Corps Center on 13th and Chambers, indicated that the cost of new construction is really pretty high and puts the rents or the purchase price at the upper end of the income scale. So, how does that reconcile then with meeting the pillar?
Yeah, and that is a challenge, absolutely. We've talked a little bit here about creating that housing ladder, so that the idea that if you bring new housing stock onto the market, that you would be freeing up older housing stock, which is typically less affordable. And we have done some work, I'm sorry, is more affordable. And we have done some work associated with that regarding costs of rent for older housing stock versus newer housing stock. And newer housing stock is typically more expensive, but it, in theory, what it would help do is free up some of that older housing stock.
It really becomes a matter of supply and demand, though, doesn't it, and surplus in the market?
It does, and I think it's one of those things that we're just going to have to monitor over time, because it's difficult to draw those parallels, you know, draw conclusions right now. But as Heather said, you know, if some of the existing stock gets freed up, then we'll be able to monitor the price points of those and see what happens moving forward.
Commissioner Duncan.
As most of you are aware, I'm somewhat in disbelief of this philosophy. I don't think it's been studied to a point where you can truly believe it works. I think it sort of, it sort of comes from the state, this mantra that if we do this, this will really work. And yet, when you talk, I called DLCD and asked them, you know, what studies they have, what have they done? And they typically point to studies that have been done in large metropolitan areas where you've got a lot of travel distance and things. I somewhat disagree that by building more new, you create a bigger supply at the bottom, because we're not allowed to build supply. We're allowed to sort of meet demand.
Demand.
So, as we get more people, that means that the whole thing has to still move to fill it, since we're not allowed by state law. And so, I've always really questioned this philosophy, particularly when I look at the cost of multifamily development versus single-family development. And if you're trying to house people at sort of the lower end of the income stream or the income median, those people have to move into fairly old type of housing to really be able to afford it. And what you end up with is, it costs so much more to build multifamily than single-family on a per-square-foot basis. The only economy that you can really gain is if you build very small multifamily versus a more typical-sized single-family, and then you always have a quality-of-life type issue. And so, I don't necessarily disagree that this wouldn't be a philosophy. I don't think we've proven it. I think we just believe it is something that works, and we really haven't analyzed it to say, does it really work? And again, I think a lot of the reason is, is that we don't get to build the oversupply somewhere. All we kind of do is move, and then, as Heather mentioned, the cost of construction of these things is very high compared to the income level that you're trying to put in, where you can actually build single-family that probably gets a little closer to a larger amount of the people that really you're trying to house. And so, I think it's a real complicated process. And depending on where we put these, and let's say we go to our commercial land as a place to look for multifamily, now you've really talked about lands that are much, much more expensive than multifamily land, and we really don't have multifamily land located close in. You know, you're familiar with that, because you're in the process of this. So, I mean, it's a real challenge to say, how do we get them closer and make them cheaper when we're going to put them on the most expensive lands that we can get based on the quarter? So, I don't think the analysis has been done to do that, but given the small shift, I wouldn't argue about this 5% shift. I think as long as we can monitor and stay on top of it, we're going to learn if it works or not. I'd like to see us do more work on it to really have a better feel for it. If we're going to try to really sell the idea that it's going to work, we need to be able to prove it to people that we can really make it work. And the cost to go get it done, and we're really going to achieve that, and not, and I'm talking about not subsidy-type programs, I'm actually talking about market-driven programs, because we're never going to do it through subsidy programs to house that many people. I mean, I think Stephanie says we're averaging about 50 units a year, I think it is right now on an average.
Well, I want to also remind that, in the context of this conversation, that we're not just talking about subsidized affordable housing, we're talking about housing affordability. And a lot of the assignment of multifamily housing versus single-family is across the spectrum of incomes, but it still needs to be affordable relative to the incomes, whether you're making $15,000, $50,000, or $80,000. People want, we're projecting people are going to want multifamily housing products. And so, it's not just talking about that.
I understand that.
Yeah, so I'm just reminding us, because I know that at times we kind of get back to that, where we think it's just that one type of housing.
And one of the things that I think we see on multifamily, to try to get it attractive to more of the median and upper income, is that you've got to do something for that multifamily housing unit that offers an amenity to the buyer. The greatest example is that you either see better condominium units located in, you know, very attractive downtown areas. You can look at San Antonio, I mean, there's places like that. The other thing that you see happen is there's some type of view amenity. Portland's been very, very successful with a lot of the stuff, but a lot of it's located very close or along the river, where if we were going to do multifamily, if we really looked at an amenity like a river view, I think then we would have a much better chance of attracting people there, because it's going to be very difficult for us to put them into our existing single-family neighborhoods, because we just don't have the land available within the current existing single-families. And it's not going to be very attractive to be located in a commercial core area until that commercial core area really has, I think, the attraction for that type. And it's sort of that chicken or the egg, is how do you get it attractive without building the units? But you can't build the units until you make it real attractive. So, I think there's some real challenges with the strategy.
Commissioner Belcher. Well, Heather, while you were talking, I did a quick web search, and I found a 2006 American Community Survey, so it's, the timing isn't comparable. But they reported that 46% of renters were cost burden compared to our 58, and 37% of homeowners with mortgages were cost burdened. So, again, we're higher compared to both of those statistics, if they're comparable. Just wanted to report that. Commissioner Randall.
Well, we've been talking a lot about single-family detached versus multifamily, and it seems like, I've always been a little bothered by the way we've divided that. it seems like, I've always been a little bothered by the way we've divided that out, you know, because it's like either or. And I guess I'm wondering if we can't somehow achieve, because it seems like the idea is to achieve the number of people that we need to house and the density that we want to get to. And yet, if the market trend is still for single family detached, which I believe it is generally, then can we achieve those things through things like smaller lot sizes, you know, allowing or, you know, having certain minimum densities, those sorts of things with smaller lots? Because I know the trend is still going to smaller lots. But, you know, and again, I think I've mentioned this before, that our current lot minimum is 4,500 square feet, and that's darn near 10 units per acre. I mean, that's really pretty dense. And so if there's some way to encourage that or head that way, can we achieve some of the things that we want to achieve in the density in the housing and still, you know, I mean, it's still a single family detached and that, but I know one of the projects up there that you showed for single families, one that we did, and it's very dense. I don't remember what the actual units per acre was on that, but it was very dense with shared driveways and those sorts of things, but it's still single family detached. And I know at the time, it, I mean, it sold about as fast as we could get them built. I know those were different times. So I guess it's just, I guess I'm wondering if we're focusing too much on the single family and then the multifamily attached and that whole mix there, rather than looking more toward the density and the number of units. Might achieve the same things and still fit the market. I guess that's my concern.
Well, we have heard quite a bit when we went through the visioning process, and I think one of our pillars, the Neighborhood Livability pillar speaks to that, talking about not increasing density in single family neighborhoods beyond that which is allowed. And so we're, you know, really, you know, sensitive to that about the single family neighborhoods. I think one thing that you've brought up before, and you kind of alluded to this, was this black and white split of single family versus multifamily. And there's multifamily that is actually lower densities, like maybe row houses or, you know, lower density, you know, single family attached, I think is what I'm trying to get at. That, you know, that's one way you could look at the mix that might help the discussion, if you want to, is that you could look at it as, for instance, a mix of 55 single family detached, and then 8% single family attached, and 37% multifamily, and focus more on, you know, maybe you want to focus more on recommending that the single family attached gets bumped up more than the higher density multifamily. You know, so that's another component there. You don't have to talk about it in the terms that we have. It's just that it has made the discussion a little bit easier to kind of segment it that way. And there are some other efficiency measures that we're doing or we're proposing, alley access lots, incentivizing secondary dwelling units. Those are single family detached, they, in theory, although there's some discussion about that, could be more affordable housing units because they're typically smaller. So I think those are right in alignment with what you're talking about.
Commissioner Belcher.
Well, first of all, let me thank the planning staff for making it possible for us to attend OPI. Because while I was there, I heard an idea that sounds interesting to me along the list, the idea of other ways to get here. Someone mentioned that in Oregon, there's a community that rather than charging SDCs for the infrastructure costs, they actually had the developer create an LID, a local improvement district, while he still was in control of the lots, he or she. And then, so the homeowners didn't have to pay the SDC charges upfront. And there also evidently is a way that you can also forgive those charges for people of a certain income. So it was a way of subsidizing the SDC charges away from the lower income folks to make housing more available for low income folks. So I know that Heather has shared with us in the Subcommittee a preliminary list of other ways that there are to get to providing more affordable housing, not necessarily through mixed multifamily versus single family mix. And I'm just wondering if there, when you get that information vetted enough to share, do you plan to share that with us and the city council?
Yeah.
Because I think that, if we're going to get to where we need to get, I think we will more likely have success with those kinds of programs than we will by trying to manipulate the multi-single family ratio. But I do like the idea of, rather than talking about, it'd be better to look at cottage, single family detached, accessory buildings as a way to get to those increased units, rather than large multifamily projects that may be more expensive in the long run. So thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I just can't believe that Heather was able to get away with saying that older people, 45 to 74. What, I mean, challenge that.
I was so shocked by that that I couldn't respond.
I'm speechless.
She kicked me, actually.
I did.
Move that slide.
You're the upper end, unfortunately.
I meant older than the younger people in the first bullet.
Everybody's older than somebody. Come on now.
Haven't you heard 60s, the new 40?
You twice referred to older people, 45. I just want to say, object to that.
My world.
Well, I'll also echo Commissioner Belcher's thanks for sending us to OPI. Again, was very informative, and I enjoyed it very much. One thing that I brought back to all of this, too, was in one of the seminars I went to, they were talking about the whole Gen Y, which are the young people, those under 30. And that, and I'm sure this is a national survey, so it may not apply exactly here, but of the Gen Y, 82% prefer an urban lifestyle, which kind of, you know, I think probably maybe contradicts a little bit of what I was saying earlier as far as, you know, the density in the multifamily and that sort of thing. But then they also mentioned that the Gen Y population bubble is actually larger than the baby boomers. And so I think as we're looking out 20, 30 years, we probably, you know, those, you know, 30 years from now, the Gen Ys are going to be our age, my age.
They'll be older?
They'll be older, yes. I said our, I said your, yeah, my age.
She knows how quickly she, wanted you to make sure she wasn't part of the older people.
As a Gen Xer, I'm not ready to categorize as older.
So with that, oh, looks like I've got more comments here.
The difference in the split is a total of 750 unit shift one way to the other, which is if we can really introduce some good policies and really come up with some good planning efforts, we probably can achieve that. Again, I would try to foster the idea that if you want to move upper income people out of detached, single family, and put them into a more multi or condo or something, that we've got to find places that you can, that we've already got an amenity that you can offer them. And to me, in our community, it's the river. And we have a lot of areas of our river that has been channelized over many, 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 many decades, and it's not really pristine natural resource lands. And if you talk to ODFW, they'll tell you there's places where wildlife corridors can be just several feet wide and still function very well. Everything doesn't have to be 100 feet back from the river. So there, I think there's some ways to do that, but it's sort of an uphill challenge. And truly, I think in our market area, if you could introduce something that would offer that kind of amenity, that you could get a lot of the builders who do multifamily to take a good, hard look at, look at projects like that.
Commissioner Belcher.
So this is a procedural question. When you go to council next week, are you planning to take a proposed percentage mix, multi-single family? Okay, so would be appropriate.
We're moving towards that direction. We're not making a recommendation yet, but we're letting them know, as we are today, where we're moving towards, based on what we've learned.
So my thought is that perhaps our recommendation should go with that recommendation, and therefore it may be premature for us to submit that letter at this point.
That it is premature?
Well, it would be premature for the letter that we have drafted to go forward.
I don't think so.
If you're not ready.
Oh, no.
We're ready, it's fine. I mean, we're not making a formal recommendation or asking for any kind of action. So I think the timing's great. We're having a conversation about it.
Okay, I misunderstood.
I think it's fine for it to come in, then.
Yes, I think it'd be helpful.
I think the Chair of your committee thinks it's a good time to go.
I saw that. I felt those barbs.
We know your biases, John.
I guess I just want, I just wanted to add, add something and reinforce what I'm understanding Commissioner Duncan to say in terms of what's going to drive the building of the stocks of housing in the future, other than some of the subsidized housing and some of the other things we can do to create opportunities. I'd also offer then, in some cases, we create restrictions as we create opportunities at the same time. But that is going to be the market that drives that. In other words, if you're going to want more multifamily housing stock created, you're going to have to, you're going to have to create housing that responds to a market drive, that people will move into those houses. And so in that sense, you know, this is still a, I understand we're trying to set goals and visions for the community, but we're also need to keep in mind that we're really looking at what the future market is going to want to be. And we just talked about Gen Y and where they're going and how that's going to affect it, and that is a market force. And we need to keep market forces in mind as we try to set our policy, so.
Well, and just to tag on to that, we didn't specifically mention it, but monitoring moving forward is really important to this issue. So we want to be tracking how many people are indeed, you know, our community is increasing by, what their market preferences are, what the affordability picture looks like. So kind of taking ongoing snapshots and adjusting our strategies moving forward is very important because of all the uncertainty here.
Okay. One last comment. Go ahead.
I think one of the challenges you have with monitoring this is that the market currently, and probably into the reasonably foreseeable future, is going to be pushing towards single family. We almost don't even have a market for multifamily housing. Of course, there's not a lender in the world right now that would even consider condominiums after the bas they've all taken over the last three or four years. So it's a real struggle to make the economics of multifamily work. And I think it's going to be a struggle to make it work probably for at least five and maybe as much as 10, because we don't see a recovery occurring at a very fast pace. So I think to try to lean hard on the multifamily could also create strategies that won't be achievable because of outside market forces that we're just not going to be able to overcome in the short run. So I think when it gets to that, we need to also talk about that restraint, the constraint right now on the system that's likely to be around for a while. We saw a similar constraint occur with the condo market back in the 90s, and lenders tended to almost shut down for a decade before they would start to entertain that type of work product, or that type of development product again, because they lost so much the last time, and it's just been, it just occurred again. There's huge amounts of loss in that market, because it seems to be the last one that comes forth and the first one to go. I mean, if you go to larger markets like San Diego and things, you can see 200 unit buildings sitting completely empty, you know, in some of the strongest markets we've gone.
I think that can vary. I learned yesterday, I don't know if you recall, the slide that had the percent shift showed Albany having a really dramatic shift. And I was on an interview panel yesterday for Department of Land Conservation Development Planner position, and one of the people was from Albany and was talking about, or had been in Albany, and was, and I asked, what did they know? Why was it like that? We hadn't figured out, why is it saying 22% shift towards multifamily? And it's because they so overbuilt single family. They're not going to need to build a single family unit for a very long time, but they have a tremendous need for multifamily. I think it's a combination of students and then other, seniors perhaps, yeah, so it has to do with their demographics. And so I think it just varies. And we're making, you know, we are looking at those demographics for young people, Gen X, Gen Y, and what they're going to need in the baby boomers. But as Carolyn said, it's, you know, it's not a precise estimate in any possible scenario. And so we need to just really have the opportunity to come back and look at it. Maybe we're going to find out that some business comes in that attracts a whole bunch of 30-somethings that want to live in, you know, reasonably priced multifamily. Or maybe we're going to get a whole nother wave of retirees, and we just don't know. And we don't know what they're going to want to live in. But we're trying to make sure that we're taking away barriers to those things happening, not necessarily forcing the market into a certain direction. Because we know we can't do that.
Commissioner Belcher.
Well, if NPR is a reliable source, evidently finding money for building anything these days is very difficult with the current lending market. So, and part of that is because of the housing stock that's in foreclosure. And until that gets resolved, we're probably not going to see much of anything happening. I'm thinking that might be a way to turn lemons into lemonade. If we had some sort of a program that could find a way to turn foreclosed housing into affordable owner housing, that would serve two purposes. One, it would help our housing affordability issue, and also would help take away that glut. Now, how you do that, I don't have an answer, but there may be an opportunity there as well. To the question that's coming before us, I think we need to try to push for more multifamily housing for all the reasons that you identified with checkmarks in the very beginning. I don't think we can push it any harder than the market can move. So, you know, that 55-45 line where you guys are, where I think you're headed in your recommendation is someone I could support, just because I don't want to get us recommending such a high percentage that we shut down both the affordable housing and the single family housing at the same time. We've made those mistakes before. And that is all incumbent upon making sure that we monitor that we're headed in the direction we want to go and adjust accordingly. And I'm very glad to see that we're thinking that way now. So there, I've shown my card.
Any other comments or questions?
And I guess, and I'm sorry, I didn't see the letter that you must have sent out today.
I have copies that can pass out.
Oh, that'd be great.
It leaves those numbers blank. Oh. I have one, thank you.
I have one. I've been suffering through computer problems.
It's on the last page, I believe.
Is this a recommendation that we're?
Yeah, I can get to it.
So is now the time to talk about this, Randy?
Yeah.
Let's go.
Okay. Well, we all know that over the course of over the past year, much has been written and much has been said about this whole housing issue. And what Heidi and John and I have tried to do in this letter, over the course of three meetings and some emails, is just capture the essence of what we feel has been discussed by the CRG and the TRG and the outreach program that the Planning Department held, the information that Eco Northwest has presented, and then our own discussions that we've had here. Boiled it down to font size 11 and four and a half pages. So let me just try to capture the essence of each paragraph, rather than getting into the detail, and then we can discuss this. So on the first page, starting with the second paragraph there, that paragraph in essence acknowledges the public involvement that we received throughout the Envision Eugene process and kind of repeats some of the conclusions that perhaps we're reaching. The third paragraph simply reinforces our planning philosophy that we've had in this community for many decades, that the conclusions would indicate that we've been on the right track and we need to continue heading in that direction. The fourth paragraph gets to the affordability issue, and we tried to state that right up front, that this is, this is the housing dilemma that we're dealing with here, not just focusing on the housing mix thing, but looking at it from a much broader perspective. And then the last paragraph there, Heather, and this is where we get into the cost of multifamily and raise more the points that Commissioner Duncan has made in that paragraph. On the second page, the second paragraph there addresses the housing plus transportation cost factors that we've been discussing, talks about that a little bit. The third paragraph leaps into the importance of economic policy and actually the significance of employment when it comes to housing affordability, that this is just not a housing land use issue, this is also an economic policy and development. issue, this is also an economic policy and development type of issue. And then, the very last paragraph gets into the very important topic of how uncertain all of this is, is, so that we don't get bogged down on, on trying to be too precise and, and landing on a final conclusion. The uncertainties are just incredible. Anyway, that's what that paragraph's all about. On the third page, that, the second paragraph there talks about the implications of how the vacant and partially vacant land that, that exists within the urban growth boundary is going to be developed, and to what extent we should expect that that will be built out, and that will have an impact on, on affordability as well. The, the third big paragraph there kind of cautions us as we proceed forward based on many of the lessons learned, that at least this Planning Commission has experience with dealing with refinement plans and nodal or mixed-use centers, or even to borrow the floor area ratio from the commercial development. As Commissioner Belcher put it, let us avoid doing harm as we proceed forward and create more of the opportunities rather than get ourselves into, into a jam. And then, the last paragraph there that starts, talks about the difficulty that I think any group that's tried to make a decision on a specific housing mix has had, and leads us into a discussion of, as Heidi put it, bookends or parameters on, on the housing mix issue. And so on the next page there, the second paragraph talks about what we perceive as one plausible argument, the high end of, of single-family, 60% single-family, 40% multifamily, going with that kind of mix, the types of land use efficiency measures that we could implement that, that could assure us that we have enough land for single-family development, should that be the trend that continues into the future. The next paragraph talks about managing growth, talks about encouraging efficient use of land, using up the capacity that we have through existing policy controls that are currently in place, such as our annexation policy, such as making a more robust capital improvement plan. And that suggests that perhaps the 50-50 split is an aggressive and outer limit as to how far we could go with any kind of a mix that we'd suggest. So then we come to the last page, and probably a discussion point that, that we're hoping that we can get to this evening, if at all possible, in order to present our information to City Council in time for their meeting next Wednesday. And that would be for us to try to identify, if not by consensus, by vote, what type of housing mix that we might want to present, since we're required to by state law. We've gone through the arguments that, that we can bracket this thing, but push comes to shove, we need to settle on a number. And then that last paragraph there is just inspired by Commissioner Randall when we last met. And that just kind of summarizes kind of everything that we've talked about, back to the Chadwick days and those early sessions bringing it forward to where we are today. So Heidi, John, if you all want to pitch in.
Well, I apologize for jumping the gun. I didn't quite understand what the process was. I, I think Randy was the primary author here, and he's done a great job in writing it and explaining it, and I can support it.
Thanks. I would, I would echo that, and I would also include that I was the one that sort of pushed us to settle on a number. I was absent the last meeting. We discussed this when that was not, not settled on, but to me, it feels like part of our, our key role in communicating with City Council is, is to actually give them a number and to give them some, some roadmap to how we got at that number, including if, if it happens that there isn't agreement within this body on what that particular number might be. So, I mean, my, my personal feeling is that I think we should be pushing towards more multifamily after a lot of discussion and thought about the realities of that. I, I felt comfortable scaling back my, my hope for multifamily mix to something where I personally feel comfortable with a 55-45, is that what it is? What it looks like we're, we're landing on. So I'm comfortable with that as well.
So Jeff, would, you know, open this now to the Planning Commission for any additional thoughts that they would like to have included in this letter, modifications, and then hopefully if we can arrive at some kind of a endpoint so that we can pass the line to the Commission, that's, that's where we'd like to get.
Commissioner Randall.
Well, thank you for putting all this together, and I think it's, it has some real good, I guess, supporting background to how you got to where you are. I guess a question I would have, is I see the 50-50 mix in there as perhaps justifiable, although aggressive, and yet we're kind of backing up a little bit maybe to the 55-45. And could you maybe talk a little bit about that? Do you feel the 50-50 might be a little too aggressive, or I guess just?
Yeah, here's where that came from, Bill. You remember the last time we met, we went around the table and people were kind of identifying where they might be coming from, and Lisa was landing on a 45-55 split, 45% single, 55 multi. She said there was some wiggle room in that, in that number. Looking back through the literature, the Eco Northwest report says the 50-50 is really about as far as they could recommend justifying things. And so again, to do this bookend thing, where we're at 60-40 on one end, we didn't feel comfortable going all the way to 45-55, so we scaled it back to 50-50. And still, according to the Northwest, Eco Northwest report, that's kind of pushing the envelope.
So you're feeling that may still be a little too, too aggressive at the 50-50?
That, that's why the aggressive is in there, yeah.
And I might also add that part of the, it seemed to me that part of the rationale for scaling back a little bit was not wanting to over-regulate something that the market couldn't tolerate, and, and, but at the same time, not losing any ground we could potentially make by encouraging more multifamily.
So the 55-45 gets us moving that direction, and we could, but, but it doesn't necessarily preclude us from getting to 50-50 should the market go there.
Yeah. Well, 60-40 doesn't preclude us from getting there either.
Sure. The 55-45 just encourages it a little more than the 60-40.
Perhaps.
Perhaps. We're hoping.
Commissioner Randall. Well, my thought was, I agree, we need, in my personal opinion, based on no empirical facts, we need to move towards more multifamily for all the reasons that have been elicited tonight. I'm also struck by the chance of over-prescribing and making things worse. And I'm also encouraged by the fact that should we see a trend through adjustment as we go along the line, we can continue to move in that direction. So, for those reasons, I feel comfortable with the 55-45. Commissioner Duncan.
The, the number for me sort of has a little bit different meaning. I mean, you, you can talk about 50-50 because we want to move towards more multifamily, but truly, this number, in my mind, has a completely different function, and that really talks about how much land we have within our urban growth boundary that we think we can use versus how much we may need to add if we don't have the capacity in. So the, the number really deals with how much capacity can we deal with from within, and do we need to add more? And so in my mind, the 60-40 or 55-45 doesn't necessarily deal with what our plans may be for the future. It deals with sort of, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it sort of deals with where we take our land inventory today and move it forward to, to, to the final point of what has to be reported to the state. So if we decide a 55-45, and that's the recommendation, you're probably talking a couple of hundred acres difference in potential expansion, and we can argue about how many acres that really is and how you get there. But to me, the number is not so much dictating how we move forward in a philosophy of how to change things. It talks about how much land we're going to need and what that capacity is. So for me, it's a little bit, a different thought process when I think about those. For me, I'm like, John, I don't want to over-prescribe something, but on the other side of it, I realize that if we, if we go too far one way, the other side of this is more, could have a more regional impact, and that is that we push more development further away from our city. And if we actually create all the jobs that we're talking about creating, those may have to then transport in. I have yet to be, from our community, in agreement that the transportation index and all will have a significant effect in our community, because transportation corridors and distances are still fairly small, or they're, they're free or traveling. You don't travel 10 miles in two hours, you travel 10 miles in 15 minutes. So, I'm not sure that I agree with that. If I can go buy single-family housing for $50,000 cheaper, that's an immediate thing to me. So, the split to me is, is different when I think about it. It really has to do with sort of the mathematics of what we end up reporting to the state for land and so on, versus, I agree with the philosophy of moving towards trying to get more multifamily, more concentrated development, but that's not what I, that's not when I vote on this number what I think I'm voting on. I think I'm voting on where I think our land supply is and what our capacity is going to be.
So where would that take you?
I'm not there yet.
Yeah, I, ever since I was on the CRG Housing Mix Committee, I was convinced that 60%, single-family, 40% multifamily was a justifiable and appropriate number. I've stated that number of occasions here at the Planning Commission. I'm, I'm still on that, on that point. I, information that the home builders have presented, looking back, going through the numbers that Eco Northwest has even provided, would indicate that past recent history would indicate that we've, we have even a higher than 61-39% mix. And so, even if we're moving to 60-40 from, if, if we accept the 61-39 mix, that's movement. My concern is, and I don't know if this is the same as Commissioner Duncan's, but my concern is, is that if we understate the amount of land that we need for residential development, and if, if again, planning practices and budget constraints and work programs somehow don't allow this monitoring process to come to fruition, as some of us who have been doing this for 30 years realize how those things can fall by the wayside when other priorities get in the way. My concern is, is that 10 or 15 years from now, if we, if, if single-family trends continue the way they are, and we run up against a, a lack of land for single-family development, and that has ramifications either in higher costs, meaning less affordability, or this outward migration to other communities, we're going to be back in this process all over again. And, and we all know, it's a timely and a time-consuming and costly process. That's why I would opt for including as much land as we can possibly justify correctly, and then implementing growth control measures. And, and again, I come back to what we already have in the annexation policies of, of contiguity in terms of annexations. I'll, I'll state it again, the Planning Commission used to review capital improvements programs which control where the sewers and the roads and water systems get extended. We gave that up a few years ago because it just seemed like a pro forma review. That process could be more robust in terms of how the City Council balances expansion, annexations against internal development of, of existing lands. My concern is, is that we continuously hear neighbors, even though we think compact urban growth is, is the, is a necessary thing to do, yet when it's, when we hear infill, people complain about that to us all the time. So it's some place in there, push comes to shove, and, and I, because of that, I'm just, I'm, I'm personally uncomfortable with going any, any tighter than 60-40 in this thing. That, that's where I'll land. If I'm in the minority, that's fine. Council needs to know that too, but that's the way I feel about it.
Commissioner Belcher. Well, I hear your concern. I think I would rather, I know it's not available to us now, but I would prefer dealing with your concerns about having land available for further expansion through urban and rural reserves. I realize that that's not available to us now. It is available to metro. I'd rather see us push for the opportunity to do that at the state level. And, you know, this is totally anecdotal, but since we began the Envision Eugene process, I've heard a shift from NIMBY, not in my backyard, to NIFI, not in farm and forest land. So I think the fact that we're talking about accommodating growth, having to move into farm and forest land, I'm hearing more people in the community say, I don't want to do that. So for that reason, I'm a little uncomfortable in heading in the direction you guys are saying. I'm very uncomfortable. So if I've created a new acronym, so be it. Yeah, we're on NIFIL, better. Now it's yours.
I'll tell you what, this Planning Commission is on the leading edge.
We had talked a while back, and maybe this is what Commissioner Belcher was talking about, with the, the idea of that phased process of bringing.
Phased implementation.
Phased implementation, yes. And is that, is that available to us?
Yes.
And so, if we, I'm just throwing out a scenario, if we, let's say, erred on the side of, say, 60-40 for additional land available, but we instituted a phased implementation, does that then have safeguards with it that keep it from just, I guess, I'm not sure I know how to say this, as far as, if we, if we're, if our goal would be, let's say, 55-45, but we establish 60-40 with a phased implementation, do we have a better chance of hitting 55-45 unless the market pushes it the other way? Does that make any sense at all?
Yeah. And we, we've talked about this, and Commissioner Lettich and I have talked about this, and some, some of what I have heard in talking with different community members about this is phased implementation is a great management tool, but don't, but once it's inside our urban growth boundary, it, it's presumed that it will urbanize eventually. And so it's, it's, it's a hard stretch to imagine that, you know, in that, over some timeframe, whether it's 20 years or beyond, that that won't eventually. So the phased implementation is more of a management tool to determine how that land comes in, but not necessarily to protect that land. These are, this is, this, these are things that I've heard expressed. The other thing is, is the state wants us to make our determination based on our need. And so, we, you know, we can't do, we can't have excess in what we think our need is. And so, of course, how we land on that precise number of what our need is, is, is not, not easy to come up with, and there's, there's, there's nothing there, but that is how the statutes are written, that, you know. So that's just a little bit.
You predict a lot of things.
We really are. We really are.
Yeah.
I think the word precise kind of doesn't apply.
How can it?
Commissioner Belcher.
So I hear Commissioner Lettich saying we can control the phasing of this growth through the way we do our capital improvement plan, but should a developer own a piece of property that they want to develop, can't they offer to provide those services and therefore sort of jump the city's process in providing infrastructure?
Potentially. There's also the annexation, and so it would have to be, you know, an orderly annexation process as well. So those are, those are the two tools.
Okay, so we could move the, the urban growth boundary but not annex those properties?
Yes.
Creating more River Road Santa Clara situations.
But it would be different, right?
Because River Road Santa Clara was, there was island annexations continuously out there, and that's been done everybody.
Well, the difference would be that people don't live in those spaces, whereas River Road Santa Clara do.
Well, and now we have contiguity, right?
Yes.
Which we didn't have at Created Santa Clara.
So we could, we may not be able to control it through infrastructure, but we're more likely to be able to control it through annexation?
I don't know. What do you think?
You can't control it through annexation.
Big question.
If, if you have the connection to the city and you have the services available, yes, a developer could then annex additional lands.
And the city would have to do that.
Yeah, but you, I mean, we have annexation procedures now that are pretty straightforward. You have to have services there within a certain amount of fee, and you have to be abutting or adjacent to the city limits, or bringing up, in enough land, other adjacent properties to make you abutting and adjacent to the city limits. But we could change those annexation regulations to put in more triggers that you would have to meet in order for you to be able to annex. So they could even be beyond or in addition to the CIP requirements. You know, you could have different areas and saying only this area, this area can't annex first, or, you know, I mean, there's, there's a number of things that you could put in there that we don't even have in there now.
I guess my concern is, we're talking hypothetical, maybe, perhaps, is, and that makes me uncomfortable.
Pretty late. Commissioner Lettich.
Well, I know Carolyn wants to reserve some time for the redesignation lands discussion, so how do we want to move forward with this? Take a vote, try to get a, see where Lisa is on it? Are there other edits that need to be made to this recommendation? Again, would like to get this to the City Council by next Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
So looking for some direction on how we move forward.
Commissioner Duncan.
I mean, my quick read-through, I think you did a great job uncovering this. I mean, you could always, you know, wordsmith and wordsmith, but that never ends. So, I mean, I don't, I didn't see anything here that, that was something that I couldn't generally agree with the way that it was put together. John just asked me, do I have my recommendation? And, and I will bring it forth now. I've been very cautious because of my membership with the CRG, but more importantly, the TRG with, as I said on that, there was always a discussion about the TRG would not take a position because we were there as a technical group, not as a, a decision or recommendation group. So my comments here are me, Rick Duncan as Planning Commissioner, not as member of TRG, because I still want to hold true to that, because I want us to do the things. I continually question, as, as you all know, about the mix of the ability for more multifamily to create affordable housing, not housing affordability. I mean, that to me is a different, and Heather and I have talked about that in great extent. I have a real concern, as Randy pointed out, that I think that we can push a little bit further. I think we have, and after all the work I've done on the TRG, I've recognized the real limitations we have on the lands that we're calling lands with capacity. I think there's some real challenges ahead of us with a lot of these lands. If we change sort of where some of those may be defined, I might come back and change my mind. But this time, I see a fairly significant amount of our lands, partially vacant and vacant, inside the urban growth boundary, that really probably don't have much in the way of capacity. And I have a real concern about that. I always have a concern about us pushing our problems outwards so that we create more VMTs. And I don't believe the market over the next ten years is going to change much at all. I've certainly looked at a lot of the information that home builders present with, with where we were and what we developed. And I remember when we did ECL, there was a significant discussion about the housing mix being as high as numbers pushing into the upper sixty percent range for single-family, and multifamily being in the low thirty percent range. And it was settled at these lower numbers for a variety of reasons, which I'm not going to say or hear or there or wherever. It's my belief, given what I'm going to suggest, when I look at the difference of the amount of lands between what we currently have inside our UGB and what we might ultimately expand, the difference of a hundred or two hundred acres to me is very insignificant. I also look beyond the twenty-year horizon that says we're going to probably need some more lands at some point later on unless our population goes a different direction or we do significantly change. But I think back to where we were in nineteen ninety and how we progressed to now, and I've seen very, very little change in the way that our housing mix works. So I would, at this point, support the sixty forty number with a recognition that I would hope that we could achieve better market conditions with regard to being able to build more multifamily, the way we define multi versus single-family, over the next several years, with recognition that we won't be able to adjust back once we do it. But I believe the implementation strategies are such that we could really control how that goes, and we could put adequate triggers in place, not to just move into the other lands. But I think that those triggers also have to be a way that doesn't put additional burdens onto those lands, financial burdens on those lands, so that, again, we increase the cost of developing lands. We've got to find a way to sort of go the other direction. So I would be in support with Commissioner Lettich and his number at this point. It leaves it up to you, Jeff.
I'll be sixty forty.
I think I would be sixty forty also. And I, I think in, in our discussion, how I've gotten there, I started at fifty five forty five, but my concern is, is kind of what Rick was talking about as far as, I've just been thinking through all the friends that I have who live in Junction City and Harrisburg and Vinita and Elmira, and not that those are bad places to live, but just the VMTs and the concern for, you know, if we, if we hit it too aggressive, and, and of course, we're trying to predict a market in an economy that's not predictable, but if we hit it too aggressive, then my concern is it will just drive people out and further, you know, add to the problem that we've already got out West Eleventh and Highway Ninety-nine and those sorts of things as far as the, the transportation issue. And I think if we have some good growth management strategies as far as the phased implementation and some of that, I think that at least gives us a better shot at controlling that. I won't say that it'll get us there, but, so right now, I'm, I'm at the sixty forty, I think, just for that reason.
I guess I would like to just, since I've only just set a number, I'll back up a little bit of what I've said, and that is, in terms of the most reliable predictors we have, right now, the most reliable predictor we have is history. It's not looking forward. I think looking forward is very, very highly variable right now. We've all admitted that it's very imprecise. We don't know what it's going to be. We do know what history has been, and we can shade that, and I think sixty forty does shade that. I guess I also like to throw out the, the goal that above all, I don't want to do any harm. And when I go to the, the PowerPoint, we talk about how, how far have we gone and what can we do? And we have limited control, and we talk about creating opportunities, and I'll say it again, that if we're not careful, I fear we'll create restrictions and affect the market in a, in a bad way in housing costs. And I think I've said that pretty consistently from the start of this process, that my chief concern here is the cost of housing, and that's where I'm landing, where I'm landing.
Can I?
I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to suggest a procedure to how to deal with the difference between us.
Yes, so was I, but go ahead.
Well, yours is probably better, but I'll go first. And that is that we just report where we landed.
As a poll, rather, rather than as a vote. That's, that's what I was going to suggest.
And then we can also ask Lisa where she wants to be.
Yeah. And so do I hear it that four commissioners were at sixty forty and two were at fifty five forty five and?
One to be determined, one to be determined, but last heard at forty five, fifty five.
Yeah.
I guess I just also wanted to quickly say that I, I felt like to thank you to the subcommittee, very well-drafted document. I support the, what I felt the consensus expression that very little or no editing is required, with now the exception of perhaps changing the statement to reflect the poll taken.
And there is one other, I'm sorry.
Well, one other question would be, do we ascribe our names to those numbers or not? What's the preference of the commission?
I don't think we need to.
I can go either way.
On Metro TV, I don't think.
Yeah. We're on Metro TV. I'm sorry, John, we're only on Metro TV.
Okay. Question, would it be more useful to have a single number and vote from this body?
I mean, I'm not sure that it's more helpful or less helpful. I think what matters the most is that the council has the benefit of having heard the conversations that you've had here, that we can talk about the, the factors that were part of your consideration of this issue, and that of seven members, we know six believe this, and hopefully we'll have the seventh by next week. In terms of reporting that information, I don't think it's particularly useful or necessary to ascribe names. Certainly anybody can watch this, it's not an anonymous vote. But to me, it's more important that we have seven people that have a representation across our community, and these are the opinions that they, this is what they've landed on. And, and I think it's also fair to say, they struggled, you guys struggled with this, and you looked at all these different issues. And so it's not that there was a resounding, it has to be sixty percent, but maybe, I mean, we'll try to convey what we heard today, characterize those. So to me, that's, to me, that's actually more elucidating than a four-three vote or a four-two vote.
I think I agree.
And I think because we're looking at two discrete, or more than two discrete numbers, that's, that's more information. In this case, I think more is more rather than less is more.
Yeah.
So let me ask, when, how much time can we give Lisa to chime in on this before it's too late to get this in front of the City Council?
Well, I mean, we're at council a week from tomorrow, is that right?
So the packet's due tomorrow.
The packet's due tomorrow, but I'm not sure that we, I mean, that, that AAS is written. I'm not sure that we're going to include this specifically. I think it's more how we're going to characterize it in our presentation, and I think.
But we'll include, we'll bring the letter.
Oh, yeah. The letter will be an attachment, but I'm saying, well, I guess if you, you're not, it depends on how you amend this, if you want to amend it in a specific way or?
Well, I, I've got clear direction that it's just reporting of the polling of the Planning Commission, four at sixty forty, two at fifty five forty five.
One yet to be determined.
Yeah.
Okay, then that's fine.
Well, yet to be, it could, you know, if we don't have an answer from Lisa by tomorrow.
Right. If this is going to go in the packet, including Lisa's vote on this or her stated opinion, we need to get it by like nine o'clock in the morning.
Oh, okay, that won't happen, so.
Well, do we know that? Do we know where she is?
We'll, we'll.
Oh.
Give her a buzz.
Couldn't we?
So we need to assign someone that task, if we want to do that. Should it be us or you?
I don't have a vote, but I can nominate the chair.
Yeah. You got her number?
Yes.
I, I guess part of my thought would be, I understand the shortness of time, but I think there was some good discussion here, and I would hope that, that Lisa would have at least the opportunity to listen to this discussion.
Yeah, to be fair.
I think because we all sort of moved a little as, as this discussion went forward, and simply say, give us your number, and oh, it's completely different, what does that mean?
Yeah.
And I think maybe a phone call to her and say, if you get a chance, try to watch the webcast of this discussion, I mean, because we did it in about an hour's worth of time. I mean, the first half hour was the presentation. Maybe it would make her feel comfortable about sort of landing at a number.
Okay. I'll, I'll give her a call. The important thing is, the meeting is, is Wednesday.
Mm-hmm.
But the letter's got to be, well, Kara, prepare it, because then Jeff's got to sign it.
No, well, so it's, it's, it's actually more complicated than that. I mean, this goes through the city manager's office, who does the packet preparation, and we have a deadline of Monday. So tomorrow's, I mean, typically, we would have already had this in.
No.
Monday is in yesterday.
As in yesterday.
So this can't get?
It, it can get in, but we, we really need something signed by Jeff first thing in the morning. So I guess my recommendation would be that, that you finalize it tonight, we try to get, or it goes in without Jeff's signature on it, but it goes in under his name.
Is that a problem?
I don't, you can PDF it to us tomorrow if you want to send something to him, and then, I mean, there's logistically a way we could get it to us, if you PDFed us a signed version of something.
I can PDF you my signature, too. I mean, you can do that.
Sure. I mean, I'm sure there's lots of things we can do.
Get it to you, and I'll, I'll sign, give you a digital signature.
Because of the timeline thing, really, we say, six people were here and one was absent?
That's, I think, unless you can get ahold of Lisa by the morning, at whatever point, Jeff can send us his signature or a signed version of this.
Just send me the document, and I'll put my signature on it and return it to you.
Mm-hmm. You've got the document.
So I'll, well, okay, got to crank it.
Yeah, so, so I, I think there's an opportunity for you to have a conversation with Lisa tonight. If that doesn't play out in the timing, I think then you forward the completed document as it is, the chair signs it, and then PDFs it back to, to us.
Okay. All right, I'll try to get.
And to Kara specifically, because we'll be in a meeting from nine eleven.
And there is just, there's one minor change that I, I think is appropriate to make. On the first page, the one, two, three, the fourth paragraph, the last sentence where it says, "On the other hand, the educational culture on recreational opportunities our city offers attract, is attracted to people who desire housing at the higher end of the price spectrum," I'd like to change that to, "who desire housing at both ends of the price spectrum." That, okay.
Good.
Okay.
Just one thing I wanted to add that didn't get mentioned in the conversation about where I landed was, I, I feel strongly that if we don't encourage some change in the market, it won't happen on its own, and that's part of why I think it's a good idea to nudge up the number a little bit.
I'd like to ask a clarifying question if I can, because we'll be tasked with kind of trying to represent the, the views here to the City Council. But when we talk about kind of being concerned about the VMT, traveling to outlying areas, is the concern that we simply will run out of land for single-family homes, and so people will have to go to those outlying areas? Or is the concern that we will have kind of artificially driven up the land prices in our community so that it's cheaper to buy in those outlying areas? I'm wondering.
For me, it's the latter.
It's the, it's the cost.
Yeah. For me, the concern is kind of what we've seen recently, where prices get artificially inflated because of the supply, limited supply.
Mm-hmm.
And, and the outlying areas end up being less expensive, and less expensive land costs.
Mm-hmm.
And since we're, when I was looking at this, where they, they talk about the housing affordability and how they factor in rent or mortgage payments and utilities, and I think it's unfortunate that they don't also factor in transportation costs.
Mm-hmm.
Because I think that's a big piece of, of that in today's market. And I think that's probably my biggest concern, is just, people will go to some of the outlying areas, it'll encourage the, the sprawl, and they won't really be thinking yet, when they do that, about the transportation costs that will be involved. And it's not just the time. I mean, yeah, you're right, fifteen, twenty minutes, you can be just about anywhere around here. But then, you know, gas is four bucks a gallon, that, that makes a difference. And, you know, people don't, don't always think of that when they're buying their house. And I think that's probably my concern. I appreciate what Heidi said, because I, I, that's where my struggle is, is between that and, you know, again, if we don't try and nudge it, but, you know, how much is a nudge and how much is, is, you know, constricting? And that's, and that's why I'm struggling with it. But I, and that's why I'm, I think, settling out on the sixty forty.
Thanks for the clarification. Thanks.
Any other discussion on this point? So our next item on the schedule was redesignation.
Yes. So I think we'll hit the lights again and show you. These are also in your packet, kind of at the end. These are also in your packet, kind of at the end. So, excuse me, we saw this slide earlier, or this graphic earlier, where we talked about how we determine how much capacity is inside our urban growth boundary. And so what we're looking at right now is land redesignation. Are there areas inside the existing urban growth boundary that might be more appropriate to be planned for single-family housing? They're currently planned for some other type of use, they haven't really developed as that yet. So are there some areas that might be opportunities to redesignate to single-family or low-density residential and thus reduce our need for a UGB expansion? We looked throughout the city, we, we actually heard a number of recommendations through the community resource group, but one of, one of the main areas that we focused on was more existing areas that are planned for multifamily housing that are on the outer edges of the city and haven't developed as multifamily housing yet. We looked at these areas, you know, there's multifamily zoning kind of sprinkled throughout the city, it would be medium-density and high-density residential, excuse me, designations. We looked at the ones that are on the outer edges of the city, not as close to city services or employment centers or, or commercial services. And that might have other limitations, like they're, they're transportation limited or maybe they have natural resource constraints, other things that might let us take this opportunity to look at, maybe they would be more appropriate under current conditions as single-family housing. And again, these are areas that are not currently built out. And part of the idea is based on the envision Eugene strategies and the discussion there about trying to locate more of our density or housing near the core, but also around existing commercial centers and existing employment centers and, and commercial corridors. And so what happened was, and what this map shows is basically the darker orangy brown.
The colors on this project are very muddled compared to what they look like on the screen.
Yes, non, non-contrasty. The darker orange brown is the multifamily designated property in the city. And the commercial is, commercially designated property is the pink. And so what you're seeing is that when we started looking at all the multifamily housing in the city and applying those different factors, you know, where are their transportation constraints, so it might be harder to do multifamily housing out there. Where have they not developed and they're, they're further out from the core, those kinds of things, and they haven't already developed as multifamily in that area. We narrowed down to a couple key parts of the city that might have opportunities for being designated as single-family instead. So you see the lower area on the left is the Eleventh and Crow Road area and then, oh, I have a pointer, this area up here, we've got Ayers Road and Delta Highway, we've got Gillum, and then we've got County Farm Road and Coburg. So I'm going to zoom in on these a little bit here, but, but those were the areas that we, we narrowed in on. Whoop, and actually, I'm going to go back, whoop, whoop, sorry about that. So we sent letters to these folks just to kind of ask them, okay, you know, what are you, what are your plans for development in this area? Maybe you don't have any plans, but if you were to think, say, twenty years, for example, in twenty years, do you see this area developing more as multifamily, which it's planned for, or are these areas developing maybe as single-family instead or some combination? We got differing feedback and I'll go through that in a minute, but the reason this is really important to talk about, number one, is to talk about the feedback that we received and whether or not it makes sense to pursue any of these areas. Number two is, there's quite a bit of capacity there. So particularly in the Crow and Eleventh area, if we actually added up all of these acreages in multifamily designations that are circled in the red there, you would end up with somewhere around eleven hundred single-family dwellings that could be accommodated on those properties if they were redesignated. So, and that's a, no, go ahead.
What's your density assumption when you make that?
Four point two dwelling units per acre and that's what was assumed in ECL. And the other consideration there is, as we're doing our capacity analysis inside the urban growth boundary, we have looked at those lands because they've been, they're planned for multifamily housing. And so we're assuming in twenty years, a certain amount of multifamily housing is going to incur on those properties. If we re-designated those areas to single-family or low-density residential, then the multifamily housing we're currently assuming on those properties would have to, we would have to figure out where those are going to go. So, so two kind of important considerations there. So I'm going to start with North Eugene.
I was just curious.
Can I go back?
The area up where the Baptist Church owns, some of that is zoned multifamily?
Yes.
And I don't see that colored in. Is it because, if I'm remembering right, when they got approval for that facility out there, they were required to do a density transfer to the remainder of their land, so it has to be at a higher density? Is that one of the reasons why?
Are you talking about this area right here?
Yeah.
One of the reasons that that area, we took it off was because there actually is an approval right now for a commercial development in this area. So it looks like that area is going to go as far as being a commercial development and so it would support that area, which there's currently future plans for development on, to have higher density around it. So we didn't want to, you know, take away that opportunity to support that commercial area.
So another question, just for clarification, it's already zoned as multifamily, it's not just designated?
For the areas that we're looking at?
Yes.
No, so the Eleventh and Crow area is designated multifamily, it's actually zoned R1, single-family residential.
Cap implications for that?
Yes. Right, so there are transportation limitations out there.
These three up here are.
These two, or, let's go to the next map.
Can I just say something? Just for clarity, this is not County Farm Road. This and this is County Farm Road, so that people don't get confused.
Is it labeled County Farm Road on that map?
I was looking at that, trying to figure out what it was.
This is mislabeled here.
Oh.
This and this.
Yes. Right, so when I talked about where it was, I said at County Farm Road and Coburg, yeah. So that's a, you're right, that is a mislabel.
GIS error.
A GIS error, I wonder if that's old County Farm Road. Thank you for that clarification.
I didn't even make the map.
So.
Why we're here.
Um, in this area, what you have, actually, these properties are zoned R2. But before I get into that, let's do a little bit of orientation, which we just did a little bit of that of. Ayers Road is right here, Delta Highway, Gillum, and again, Ayers Road, and then County Farm Road and Coburg. So we're talking about, these actually aren't that many properties. This is part of the golf course here, part, the lower part of it is actually designated multifamily, MDR, medium-density residential.
It's just west of Ashley Estates, is that right?
Mm-hmm. And.
And also zoned?
It is zoned, I think it's zoned R1 actually, or single-family residential. And then similarly, this area is actually zoned partially C1 and single-family. And then this area is, is different, it's actually zoned and designated multifamily.
So this is a question that I am embarrassed to ask, but I should, because I should know from being in ECL, but does it matter, was it designated or zoned as far as?
Designation.
It's the designation that determines the capacity? Okay, thank you.
It is for the purposes of, we actually have to do an analysis of both. We have to do an analysis of, for instance, with partially vacant land, we have to look at anything that's designated residential and anything that's zoned residential. So what we have to be careful of is not doing a double, double counting, obviously.
Okay, thank you for that.
Mm-hmm. And so, so that's a little bit of orientation where we're at. Part of the reason I, this is at such a scale is to show you, which maybe is a little bit hard to see, but you have color copies in your packet, to show you what the land use pattern is in the metro plan around that, around this area. So this, as far as the golf course goes, this area is all designated low-density residential. This area is all designated low-density residential, but you can see right here that we've got medium-density residential and that's actually a small, small lot subdivision. And then down here, this whole strip here is designated medium-density residential. So I just wanted to kind of provide you context for what it might, you know, what it would look like if those areas were re-designated to single-family.
Refresh my memory, something zoned multifamily has the ability to have a small amount of commercial development within it?
Yes.
But if we.
With, you know, caveats.
What I'm thinking of is, one of the things that we're talking about is sort of this idea of twenty-minute neighborhoods. Given that I live up in part of this major green area that I have no place to walk to or ride my bike to hardly without crossing freeways and everything to get to stores, I would suggest that if we think about this, we think about some code shifts that allow some supportive commercial to go in, that is easier to develop than through the current C1 process in an R1 zone. So that we have the ability to, to bring in maybe the small store or the little restaurant like a cornucopia or something like that. So would ask, we kind of keep that in mind if we're thinking about some of this stuff.
So here's, I just want to be clear what you're suggesting. You're saying that if they go to low-density residential, we should think about also in tandem making it easier to do commercial on low-density residential properties?
And I'm not talking about, you know, a shopping center, I'm talking about some neighborhood support type stuff that would be easy to occur so that maybe we can actually utilize some of these areas to a higher and better use that supports the immediate surrounding neighborhoods.
You can truly have a twenty-minute neighborhood.
Yeah, I don't have one.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, I would second Rick. I live here, work here, run all over this place and as I try to figure out twenty-minute walks, I mean.
Quit running.
Walking to Costco and carrying back, you know, carton of toilet paper or walking down to Market of Choice, those are hikes. And I've always thought that this property here, which has that commercial designation, would make a pretty nice little convenience store, so as you go monkeying with re-designations.
Monkeying.
That's one of those planning technical.
Yeah. I'll zoom in a little bit for you, just so that, because you were talking about this one. So this would still remain commercially designated. The commercial zoning goes up into this property, I may not be drawing it exactly right, but the commercial zoning does go up into this property. And what we've heard from these property owners, this property owner is interested in going to single-family, this property owner is interested in going to single-family, would also be okay with some medium-density residential remaining on it, but would like to see the commercial zoning go. And I know I'm mixing zoning and designation.
Is that where the guy's got that little?
There's nothing on this property.
Repair facility.
Here, right here, yeah. But this, this is a different property than the one that we're talking about here. I haven't heard from this gentleman as far as this little nugget of medium-density. And then over here, you may have actually read about it in the paper, these two larger lots are coming in for multifamily development. And so I think at this point, you know, given the fact that they've shown an interest in, and I've actually talked to the potential new owners, I haven't talked to the current owners, but the potential new owners, they want to go forward with multifamily. So I think, just to get to the punchline here, is that at this point, it seems like there's more momentum for looking at these areas for re-designation with maybe some MDR continuing on this property, especially given the commercial zoning and if this stays MDR, and that we would just probably not pursue that in these areas.
Therefore, in my mind, it would be part of, one of the better examples of where we might actually get a little mixed-use development.
In the middle one?
Yeah, at a small neighborhood scale.
Mm-hmm.
This is trying to do mega centers like we seem to try to plan for sometimes.
So you've sort of led to my next question, which is, we're assuming that we would consider these changes if the property owner desired it, we're not talking about imposing it, because then that would be a downzoning.
Yeah, at this point, what we've done is just initiated the conversation to understand what they are thinking and what the interest is. We haven't gone down the road at all of requiring it. It's definitely something that could be considered by the city council or, you know, for other reasons, to reduce UGB expansion, those kinds of things. I mean, it is kind of an efficiency measure for a single-family, re-designation is, because it reduces the need for expansion.
I think, get, sorry, given that that property owner has gone kind of down the path and, and really done some planning around the development, it feels a little awkward to come in and switch up on them at this point in time.
But you might consider changing the zoning designation even if a landowner opposed it?
Well, that's a question we'd have for you, actually. And I think, you know, we'd like to hear your input on that and especially when we look at the ones down around Crow Road where there's, there's kind of a larger, larger area to look at.
So on that note, I'm just, because I know we're running out of time here. So again, this is West Eleventh, this is where West Eleventh turns to go west, this is Crow Road right here. And so the area we're talking about is basically west of Lane Memorial Gardens and then the urban growth boundary runs right along Green Hill. So I'm just going to scroll up here in a minute so you can see the next kind of blow up in there, but there is commercial planned but isn't going on right here. This is industrial zoning, you've got parks and open space, and this, you may recall, recently was re-designated from parks and open space to single-family.
But there was also, and just to add to that, when that was done, that ended up being seventy-five trip cap, as I recall.
Right, yep. Twenty-seven units can be built.
I can't, I can't.
That's something to keep in mind here.
But that was a rezoning.
Right.
Okay, so this one, what this shows you, was there a question, sorry?
Oh, I just surprised that that piece is zoned commercial out there.
Yeah. Yes.
And at the one corner and a derelict gas station.
But that's a significant-sized piece.
Not only that, but this is actually also zoned commercial. So that's why this, the study boundary that we looked at didn't include these folks because it's zoned and being used for commercial, it's the feed store. So this is. All zoned, single-family. And what you can see is that there's kind of a, basically a mixture, you've got Laporte, boy, this mouse, I'm having a tough time here, that you've got Laporte Drive down the middle and that's the only place that we've heard from some folks that they actually don't want, they want to stay at medium-density residential on some of these smaller lots. And then the larger lots, we've heard from folks that they're not sure, they're kind of maybes on that end. So, and then, and then on top of that, you know, some of these areas over here and some of the areas up here and down here, some of these smaller, also smaller, kind of medium-sized lots, they're, they are interested in going to single-family. So this area represents quite a mixture of responses from folks about whether or not they want to go to single-family or not. they want to go to single-family or not. And so the, so the main question that I think we have here is, you know, is this an area that it makes sense to pursue for a single-family, given its location, it's right on the urban growth boundary, which you can see here in brown? You know, and if so, I think the next steps would be, you know, how much is it all or part of it?
Lot of questions. Commissioner Belcher. Just an observation, that the eastern third of that looks pretty steep. So I don't know how much opportunity there is there in either case. Commissioner Randall.
I was just curious, the people on Laporte that indicated that they wanted to stay multifamily, did they indicate why, as far as just potential redevelopment or?
Yes, that's the most common thing that I heard, even from the folks that said maybe, was, you know, they're interested in, you know, if they do do development out there, there is an idea that you can get more, it's more cost-effective to do multifamily out there for them than it is for a single-family. They would, it would actually be worth more.
If you turn our numbering system over, then people would think it, people ask it's the numbering system.
Commissioner Duncan.
A couple of thoughts. One is you've got what would hopefully at some point be major employment across the way in that I-1, and we're talking about possibly shuffle or changing the I-1 a little bit. It would seem to me at least, maybe the stuff down along 11th might still be a little more beneficial towards at least a little higher density, maybe a 1.5 or something like that. I would, I would be curious as to this commercial piece up here, if that person might see another zoning that might be beneficial? Because that's kind of an odd place, if you, for the size of it, that's a fairly sizable piece of land, I'm going to guess. I mean, it must be 20-plus acres? I mean, I don't know what you would put out there, that you would ever see that develop. It may be that, again, a change.
Is that a transit center?
Pardon?
Is that a transit center?
Unfortunately, it's back further.
It is one of the, for our.
Park and ride? But it just seems to me that you might contact somebody, there might, because I don't know if there's anything on it.
Right.
It may be something that, you know, possibly could pick up some extra land there.
Wet ones?
Yeah.
Well, the whole thing's wet.
So, to be clear, the zoning versus the designation currently is, in this property, it's currently zoned?
On the large commercial property?
Yeah.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, just trying to make sure I understand what you're asking.
The large commercial property, I think, is zoned residential, but I'd have to remind myself about that. I know that there, no, actually, I think it is zoned commercial. The area that's outlined in red is zoned R1. It's all zoned R1, it's planned for multifamily.
Chair Mills, I just want to point out, we have three minutes left of the scheduled planning commission time, and I am sensitive to not having the meeting continue once we go off camera, so I just wanted to point that out to you.
Commissioner Belcher. Well, my two cents is I'm uncomfortable taking away a designation that people want to keep, and especially given that we just had a long conversation about how we can get more multifamily, and we're talking about potentially taking away the opportunity for someone to do multifamily who wants to. So at least as far as the multifamily-desired property owners, I wouldn't go anywhere near them.
I don't think you can afford to.
And then there's that whole question of, what is it called?
I think it's a take.
I would think so, too. I'm not an expert.
I have.
It's a downzone, no, it's a take, it's a downzone.
Yeah.
Work for the city, work for the property.
So I guess, it sounds like we're out of time here. Thank you very much. I have a feeling we're not through with this, there'll probably be more to come.
Mm-hmm.
And with that, we'll close this discussion and quickly ask if there's any items from staff?
There are not from me. Karen, do you have anything?
Any items from commissioners?
Just a quick thank you from me, too, for sponsoring this, and that OPI went to some sessions that were really interesting. We can maybe talk more about them later.
Okay, that'd be great.
And I'd like to schedule a half an hour or so sometime in the near future for us to report back what we learned.
We should do that soon, because we are in the 45 to 70-ish old category.
That's right, we may quickly forget.
I'm not.
I just wanted to say, let's not criticize Heather's youthfulness and immaturity, because she's doing a fine job.
I just want you guys to know that 35 to 45, that category, is constantly left out of the demographic. So they just, we don't even exist, if that makes you feel any better.
That's because at that age, you seem to be moving back with your parents.
We're off the radar.
Well, with that, I'll thank everybody, and we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks.
So now it's 35 to 45, I'm going to go with 45 to 75.